Let's all stand for the flag, please. I believe.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the minutes, you received a copy of last meeting's minutes. This morning, I believe, via email. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as we're going to approve the current financial report from the auditor's office discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
For the agenda, I have nothing to add or delete. I have not been informed of any need for an executive session, so there it is.
Move to approve the agenda as it is presented.
Mr. Schmidt, approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Public hearing. We have nothing scheduled for this evening. Anyone wishing to address counsel may do so. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and whatever it is you want to share with counsel. Hmm. Limit everyone to a two minutes if we keep this up. Okay, seeing no one, we will move the agenda and go on with the administrative reports. Mayor Wilman.
I got a couple of things, just announcements. Don't forget Saturday mornings, you know, you've only got like two, three left. Farmer's Market in front of the courthouse. It goes from nine o'clock AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday mornings. Illumination Festival is coming up. It's kind of a big deal. Growing and growing every year. Lots of great music, a lot of great artists coming in, so that'll be on the 21st. The fairgrounds at 5:00 PM. And also the Harvest Spectacular on September 28th will be coming up. It's a food truck rally, craft shows, music, lots of different things for everybody, kids' stuff, so that's on the 28th at 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Good evening, counsel. Councilman Wright, he has some documents here. I only printed out one copy, and hopefully he takes a gander at that and passes it on down the line for you to look at. Hopefully. The, what we have is the renderings for the South Park splash pad. And just to bring you up to date on that project, I have met with three different companies trying to come up with a design that will be utilized next year for the splash pad, and this is all part of a grant that we've received from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, the Land and Conservation Fund grant, as well as the Wayne Hospital Foundation has contributed funds to this project. On the front of what you're looking at, there are three different estimates. The first estimate from Vortex, which is a company I've actually been dealing with for several years. I met them the last time I was at a OML conference. And we've been talking non, kind of throughout the process, and they finalized their design and came in at $253,584. And then the other two companies, Penjura and Game Time, are both a little bit higher. Penjura at $298,644, and then Game Time at $273,001. Very happy with Vortex. I'm happy with the amount of time that they've, and thought that they put into the design. Never would have fathomed the amount of design knowledge that just goes into an interactive splash pad. And that's one of the key words, is that what we've come up with is interactive for the kids, and it's interactive at all ages. And the splash pad is somewhat broke up in the zone, so you would have an area where your little kids will play, your adolescent, and then your older kids, your teens, would focus their attention. And they're not intermingled. So that, to help, you know, defray any incidences while they're there playing. But anyways, the reason I bring this for you, that bring that before you this evening, is Vortex is offering an additional 2% discount if the splash pad is ordered before November the 1st of this year. And Vortex is a member of the National Purchasing Partners co-op, and the city of Greenville has the opportunity to join this co-op as well. And what that does is it provides a vehicle for municipalities, specifically the city of Greenville, to purchase that splash pad directly from Vortex without doing the competitive bid. So they've submitted their contract prices to National Purchasing Partners, and that is the price that we would get. It's a 5% discount off of the price you see listed on their invoice. And then we would get an additional 2% for a total of 7% discount if we can get them a purchase order before the 1st of November. So I bring this before you this evening to take a look at, depending on your level of comfort, to know if you, how you would want to proceed, whether we somehow do a quick committee meeting before the next council meeting, if you feel comfortable with the information that I'm giving you this evening. But somewhere in the near future, we would, before the second council meeting in October, to take care of, or take advantage of the 2% discount, we would need to have legislation to make this purchase. We also, this evening, you have legislation to consider that authorizes myself to enter into the grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So once that is in place, we would make the initial purchase, and then, once we pay that bill and can prove that we've paid that bill, we can submit that to the state for reimbursement. So it would be money, money out, and then money back in once we, once we submit our receipts. And then that material would be delivered, most likely right after the 1st of the year, and then we would store that material in the South Park building until spring, and then Vortex is also responsible for the installation. So they come in and do the excavate. We're responsible to get the kiddie pool, the shelter, basically a clean slate for them to come in. They do the excavation for, for the splash pad. So the other two phases of this project are, the first phase is the restrooms inside the South Park rec building, and then the next part would be the parking lot outside of the rec building. And we're tying all three projects together through the one grant and the contribution from Wayne Healthcare Foundation. Any questions I can answer about that?
Notice, and I assume that's just an artist rendering with the water tower there, but it's going to be in the area of where the current waiting pool and all that stuff located.
Yeah, I, with the program that we use in planning and zoning, pictometry, you're able to create a circle and impose it over a certain area. The splash pad from diameter of that circle is about 90 feet. So it's going to take up from just north of the building all the way over, almost all the way to the swings. So it's big, and it's going to go from, it'll be off of the curb quite a bit, but then it'll go all the way back to kind of almost the middle of South Park. We don't want to go across the water line that's right there, but it's, it's, it's pretty big. When you step off 90 feet, you can, you go out there, and you can see that it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty impressive for that little park, so.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Reuse the water?
No, this is a potable system.
What they have down here.
What they have down here, and so that we do not, if we had a, if we had a recirculating system, we would have to staff it with lifeguards. We have to monitor the chemicals with the potable. There are no chemicals to monitor. There's two actuators, so a person would go up, they would touch it, it would come on, it's going to run for fif, half of the system will run for 15 minutes. Now, if you push them both at the same time, the entire system will run for 15 minutes until that button's hit again.
What size of water line are they going to run to that?
We need a three-inch water line. We're going to, because of what we've been through with the urban park, we'll do it the same way. So there will be a three-inch feed that will come off of the main line into that building where the old restrooms are at. It'll go through a backflow preventer, and then it'll get, there'll be an air gap. That water will go through the air gap into another line. That line will fill a tank, which will be buried on the east side of where those restrooms are at. There will be a pool pump inside that building that will then draw that water out of the tank, and from that pool pump, it will go to the various features. Through a, the word I was looking for, manifold. It goes through the pool pump to a manifold, then that manifold determines where the water goes from there. Any other questions? How would you like to proceed?
I think we should take advantage of the discount myself. I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't?
That's why I'm making this presentation. I feel very comfortable. I've done my homework in sitting down with the three companies, learning about all the different features that go into building the splash pad. I feel very comfortable with the, with the company. Done some checking. This particular company has just finished an install down in Springbrough. Springbrough is very happy with, with the results of what, what they were able to accomplish. Local company that did the Yolo Park double J actually worked with, in conjunction with Vortex down in Springbrough. So I, again, I think their reputation precedes them, and I'm very comfortable with them.
I've got no issue with it.
I think we should move forward.
Closer to 19. So the legislation would come to, would state that, you know, we're members of the National Purchasing Partners, our contract number, a quote from Vortex, and that approval, and then also we'll, and we'll work this out with Roxanne to have the necessary appropriations made so that we can pay the bill. Any other questions on splash pad? Other projects that we have in the works, maintenance paving, the mill will be here tomorrow, so you will see pavement planing start. They are going to begin on Seder Street, then it'll go around to Sebring Warner, and then it'll be the parking lots. So public service announcement, most likely end of this week into next week, at least for a day. Each parking lot will be down. And once the parking lot, the surface had been milled or planed, parking can resume until we get back around the pave. We'll do the paving. Parking lots will open back up. So there should be just a day at a time closures on each parking lot, and not all at the same time, because the, due to the amount of work, it'll take pretty much three quarters of a day just to do one parking lot, because of all the forwards and backwards and debris removal, so.
That portion of Ohio Street turned out nice.
Thank you. We're really impressed with that, and a lot, a lot of compliments, so.
Very good.
Yeah. And then the North Broadway project, believe it or not, we're coming to an end, and you've seen the topsoil being placed, the hydro seeding is happening. Few minor, we finished up on pouring concrete in some of those areas that got left to the end, but as of today, I believe all the concrete is poured, and we're 100% dedicated to restoration at this point. And as that mill has come to town to do the milling or planing for our 2019 pavement maintenance project, we will also be doing North Broadway at the same time. So with a little bit of complexity, our engineer consultant will be out there. The street's going to be milled at various depths so that we get a good ride surface at the end. So any questions on any of the projects that we have going on?
Any more on the street lighting for the rest of North Broadway?
I believe with decisions that were made by this council, we're moving forward with Miami Valley lighting, so we'll have the same style of streetlights that we have on North Ohio in front of the K-8 facility, so.
Did you get the issue resolved with Mr. Plessinger?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and I, very, you know, he had a valid concern when he saw this void area. However, the intention was to go ahead and pour concrete between the sidewalk and his retaining wall. It's just not all done at the same time. So they pour through the sidewalk, and I believe by Friday of that week, that issue had been, had been resolved. So the concrete had been poured all the way up to the sidewalk. The only issue that I can address was the, was the steps. His steps were outside of the right of way. I don't know that we ever would have discussed the city replacing his steps. I think maybe what was said was, let us get our project done, and then you can pour your new steps to our sidewalk so that everything matched up. But I believe that issue is, is resolved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Moving on to our fire department, we have three used, we call them tough books. You would know them as laptops. The reason we call them tough books is because they're laptops that are supposed to be tough and destructible. You can drop them, you can't, you're not supposed to be able to break them. Yeah, it's our, it's in our, it's, it was the newest technology to have what we call mobile data terminals, so that we could have information at our fingertips, whether we were in a fire truck or, or a police car. With technology, it improves, it gets better. We've moved on to the use of tablets, which are less costly, take up less room. However, we have these three tough books. Normally, with old computers like that, we would sell that stuff on gov deals. The police fire chief, all in the same person, has expressed interest in obtaining those three tough books. And I'm asking counsel this evening if they would be willing to have legislation prepared that would transfer or move those three tough books to the Union City, Indiana Police Department, Union City, Ohio Police Department slash Fire Department. Do you have an issue with that? The hard drives in the computers have been removed, so they would get the tough book, and then they would have to purchase a new hard drive to put in that tough book if you agreed to donating that property.
Anyone have an objection to that?
No objection.
No kidding here.
As long as we can make it happen, it's fine.
Okay, good deal. And then just one last thing out of the, that will be coming your direction, I'm assuming within the next probably month or so. The Planning and Zoning Committee heard a, an issue from a citizen. And this really is a community issue that I wholeheartedly believe we, as a Planning and Zoning Commission and a council, need to address. Can you pass those around? There's a couple of pictures on top. And that issue is the use of donation bins in our retail area. These donation bins are placed at Kroger's, Lowe's, they used to be at Tractor Supply. And sometimes these bins are just being placed, and the business doesn't even know they're there until stuff just shows up. And I believe, and the person making this complaint believes, that we should have some kind of rules or regulation that govern these donation bins. And most likely, that would be found in our zoning rules and regulations. So the Planning and Zoning Commission will be working on a recommendation to make to this council and seek approval that would add something to our planning and zoning rules and regulations that would govern how these are placed, whether it's, they're placed with a permit, whether, there's a fee associated with the placement. Because they really, I'm sorry.
Who's placing the bins?
I don't even, I cannot tell you the company, but the way that it works is that there is a company X, and they place these bins, and they solicit these donations. And a lot of times, those donations aren't even what they want. They take that stuff and they sell it, potentially sell it overseas, and they make money on it. And then they turn around and from the profits that they generate, they give a stipend or a donation to whatever organization you see on the bin. So it is not, it is not Special Olympics that is placing those bins. It's another company, and then they're giving a donation based upon their sales to the Special Olympics. And I would tell you in talking to the local organizations, our local organizations would only see that money in a roundabout way, that if they participated in some event at the state level. That money is not coming directly back to the local Dart County organization.
At one time, I don't know how long ago, but at one time, didn't the Salvation Army put some bins out like that because it had, I was thinking, it had the red placard on it that.
Yeah, and I believe the Salvation Army was a little bit different, because with the local Salvation Army in Dayton, they had the truck. They went around and they, you know, they managed their own.
Right. But this is not.
This is not the Salvation Army, and, you know, they have a scheduled pickup maybe once every month, every two weeks. But, you know, and most generally, what happens when somebody's moving over the weekend, that's when they fill up, and then they're not disposed of properly. It sits there for an extended period of time. Our police department is trying to address these issues as they arise. As the person making the complaint stated, you know, this isn't what we need our police department doing. So we really could do a little bit better job with the rules and the regulations and try to either, one, totally eliminate this issue, or somehow detour that it's not an issue, and it becomes better managed either by the property owner or by this company that's placing the bins.
So you say zoning and planning is.
We're working on that, and we hope to, in the near future, have a recommendation to counsel.
Okay. Could it be counsel's responsibility to pass a legislation to put it on?
And make it a part of our zoning rules and regulations.
If I remember, you said there was nothing that came back to Dart County or Greenville itself.
Monetarily.
Right.
It goes at the, they make their donation, or they make whatever they give them at the state level.
So it really doesn't benefit us.
From what I was told by the director, was the only way that it'll benefit us is if our athletes in the Special Olympics would participate at, at the state level. Which we do.
Yeah.
Occasionally. But that's, for each sport, it's only one time a year.
Right.
And that's if they decide that they're going to give them something. They give them a little bit, they, you know, nobody knows how much.
They could give them $10 and say, you know, we gave.
Right.
Right.
With that, Mr. Council President, I will pass. Was there other questions?
I was just gonna, just gonna comment real, real quick. I, this picture here with people bringing furniture to the, I mean, it says clothes, shoes, books. Doesn't say anything about tables and chairs and couches and everything else. It does, it's a great service. I mean, I've taken stuff to those, because I've had clothes that, you know, I didn't, I wanted to take the goodwill, but I wanted to at least donate them. And I never saw furniture. I mean, why would somebody do that?
It's a free dumping ground.
Right, exactly. And that's the problem, so we got to do something about it. We got to define it. Wow, it's amazing.
Anything further?
I pass, thank you.
Thank you. Law Director.
I pass.
Hey, thank you for sitting in for Mr. Brand. Mr. Cox? Glad to have you here. And the auditor is at a conference today, for this evening. And so I'm going to ask the clerk of counsel to remove her clerk of counsel hat and deputy auditor, and is there anything from the auditor's standpoint?
No, I will pass on that.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gave you the opportunity.
Okay, you did.
Thank you. There's nothing under committee reports, and we have about six pieces of, of legislation to consider. So the first one is a resolution authorizing reimbursements for sewer cleanout expense.
A resolution authorizing reimbursement of sewer cleanout expense. This resolution authorizes reimbursement of sewer cleanout expenses in the amount of $900 to Todd and Deborah Oliver for the installation of a sewer lateral cleanout incurred by them prior to the North Broadway infrastructure improvements.
Make a motion to suspend the rules in this resolution and read it by title only second and third time.
Mr. Godwin, to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title second and third time. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing reimbursement of sewer cleanout expense. A resolution authorizing reimbursement of a sewer cleanout expense.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Whitaker, to adopt the resolution. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
And next, we have a resolution application for Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund grant.
A resolution, an application for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Program State and Local Grant Agreement 39-01464. This resolution authorizes the Safety Service Director to file a grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for improvements and renovations of South Park.
Move to suspend the rules and give this resolution a reading by title only for the second and third time.
Motion, Mr. Whitaker. To suspend the rules, read the resolution by title second and third time. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
An application for our Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Program State and Local Grant Agreement 39-01464. Application for Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Program State and Local Grant Agreement 39-01464.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Motion, Mr. Rogers, to adopt the resolution. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing Safety Service Director to advertise for bids downtown pedestrian project, side street lighting.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for downtown pedestrian project, project and side street lighting. This resolution authorizes the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for downtown pedestrian projects and street lighting.
Move to suspend the rules, give this resolution second and third reading by title only.
Mr. Rogers, to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title second and third time. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for downtown pedestrian project and side street lighting. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for downtown pedestrian project and side street lighting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion, Mr. Whitaker, to adopt the resolution. Discussion.
Is this the paper project?
It's the stamped concrete project.
Yeah.
And
Remover, removal of the paper.
And this includes the directional drilling for future.
Is this the paper project?
It's the stamped concrete project, and
Removal removal of the paper.
And this includes the directional drilling for future street lighting. The streetlights, as we discussed, would be a project next year. This is just putting the underground electric in on Third, Fourth, and Fifth Streets, and this is the stamped concrete, taking into no consideration what may happen in the future with outdoor dining. So, this is from one, from the circle all the way to Washington Street, moving this project forward, because we've not heard anything as far as the, any of the outdoor dining, so we need to get this project done.
Other discussions?
Okay, the motion is to what?
Adopt.
Adopt.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Godwin?
No.
Hensley?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries four to two. Next, we have a resolution authorizing propos- a proposal to the Ohio Department of Transportation grants for Ohio Transit Partnership and declaring an emergency.
A resolution authorizing submission of proposals with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants for the Ohio Transit Partnership Program OTP 2, and an execution of contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposals, acceptance, and declaring an emergency. This resolution authorizes the Public Transportation Director to participate in Ohio Department of Transportation contracts and the Ohio State Administration contracts in conjunction with the SFY 2020 grant application for the purposes of equipment.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on this resolution and read it by title only second and third time.
Question, Mr. Godwin, to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title, second, third time, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing submission of proposals with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants for the Ohio Transit Partnership Program OTP 2, and an execution of contracts with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposes, grant proposals, acceptance, and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the emergency clause.
Question, Mr. Rogers, to adopt the emergency clause, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to so, adopt the resolution.
Yeah, resolution. A motion by Mr. Rogers to adopt the, the resolution, discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
And item five, we have a supplemental appropriations ordinance.
A supplemental appropriation ordinance, an ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. This supplemental ordinance authorizes appropriations in the General Park and Capital Improvement Fund. The General Fund for Property Repairs and Property Maintenance in the amount of $4,000. This is a request for funds needed to clean up 316 12th Street. New planning in the general amount of $2,000. These funds represented donation from Dick Brown for trees along Fourth and Switzer Streets. New planning for the park in the amount of $500. These funds represent donations received. State share roadway enhancement CIP in the amount of 300, $321,237.32. These funds represent an Ohio Public Works Commission grant received for North Broadway Street Improvements Project.
Move to suspend the rules and give this, uh, ordinance a second, third reading by title only.
Question, Mr. Rogers, to suspend the rules, read the ordinance by title, second, third time, discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
A supplemental appropriation ordinance, an ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. A supplemental appropriation ordinance, an ordinance to make additional appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Question, Mr. Rogers, to adopt the ordinance, discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
An ordinance for the transfer of funds among the appropriation of the various funds of the City of Greenville. An ordinance for the transfer of funds among the appropriations of the various funds of the City of Greenville.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Question, Mr. Rogers, to adopt the ordinance, discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
And Wright?
Yes.
An ordinance for the transfer of funds among the appropriation of the various funds of the City of Greenville. An ordinance for the transfer of funds among the appropriations of the various funds of the City of Greenville.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Question, Mr. Rogers, to adopt the ordinance, discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Did you see on the summary?
There you go.
There's four zeros.
Oh, no, it's only 3,000. An extra zero.
I wanted, I wanted your word, $3,000 instead of 30.
No, three. I said three, too, really.
Yeah. Nothing under old business or under new business.
Correct.
In agenda, communications?
The monthly reports that have been distributed for fire, street, public transit, and income tax for the month of August, and those have all been distributed.
If you'll send the one on transportation, the transportation director may take that one with her tonight.
No, she won't ask.
Oh, she won't?
No.
Oh, okay. She'll be out first thing in the morning to pick it up.
Yes, she can have it tomorrow. Did you want me to address this other piece of communication that you sent for the closing of lane traffic to be closed? You want me to read those? You're good. That was just distributed to council.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Nothing else under communications. Um, at this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse the absences for the month of September.
So, moved.
There you go. Question by Mr. Godwin, to suspend, excuse me, excuse the absences for September. Discussion. Call the roll.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
And Wright?
Yes.
I know Dory Howard Shaw is far away, but thoughts and prayers are with you, lady, and keep up the good work. Call down to council, please.
Godwin?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming up tonight, and Dory, get well, and with that, I'll pass.
Hensley?
I'll pass.
Rogers?
Yes, I'd like to thank Kurt for following up on the times of the trash pickup. I received that email or information, and I guess I don't have a problem with the busier streets like was stated in that email, so if that's, you know, suitable with everybody, well, that's fine with me.
Until they present something to us, we're gonna leave it the way it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll pass.
Schmidt?
I will pass.
Whitaker?
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I want to wish God's blessings and speedy recovery to Dory. I know she went through extensive surgery, and we just wish her the best, so with that, I pass.
Wright?
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Dory, hurry up and get back here. You're, you're missing a lot. Kurt, on Main Street, east of Ohio, can the police department try to enforce the speed limit down there?
On Wrexworth Road?
Yeah. The, the traffic is going way beyond the speed limit, and there's a lot of kids on that street before something happens.
Okay.
But other than that, I'll pass.
President Birken?
Thank you.
I have, just bring you greetings from General Washington at Mount Vernon, Virginia, where we were this last weekend, so did spend some time with the general. Quite an interesting gentleman, I must say. But nonetheless, thank you all for your attendance, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Question, Mr. Whitaker, to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Rogers?